...
Um, Mr. Mayor, Jackson, so, uh... I have an issue.
Yeah, you mean it?
Yeah. This is I don't, I am, okay, so we can, um, um... I have no objection to the person being thoughtful of this. Identity conversation was for four. We've got ten thousand five hundred people in some boroughs. The ratio divide, I can't say it, fifty-fifty. Greek, if you let it, but at the same time, we've got, what I notice is twenty percent run a eighty percent of the population, not because they voted or don't vote. See, because I'm gonna see that everybody gets out and vote for this election. But, when it comes to where, we don't see minority people in my city government, I can't notice. I stopped what I was doing, oh wait, oh, I got those, right. Um, we've, we've got it to where twenty percent, if you don't know any minority, you ought to get the wheel and put them in yourself, because it's out of order. I, I have no objection to the people that are there, but I'll tell you this, before we begin, I'm gonna have a list of every committee that's thoughtful of it, their ethnic background, how long they've been here, not been here, and look at it where I'm opposed, because we need to know why we can't come together, especially when we have a large minority population. And believe me, they're going to vote, they're going to vote, take notice of that. I hope I had it right, because I'm upset that this is going on, on here, here, and you know, and we're not talking green, we're talking about the black and white, I'd rather we talk something like green, because... My time is up. I'd rather we talk something green, because we ain't got none. And somebody doing something about it, since we're a minority, we don't know as much about the green as we do about the black and white. So, in this time that we have, take notice of what is going, because I'm gonna make sure you take notice of what I'm doing. Thank you. Uh, do you want to comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
All right, hopefully the chair will back tonight, you're a self-career. But, uh, you know, I'm glad you're concerned, but you know, this has been announced at board meetings for the last three or four weeks, that you're giving letters, should be receiving one letter. So, if someone's interested in a, in a committee, I would encourage you to get a letter into, into, uh, the front desk, makes my attention, it makes the attention of the chair, but I received one letter for this committee. And the person that we're appointing tonight is that individual, and, excuse me. So, um, if you know anyone that wants to volunteer, I encourage you to give, get out there and get them, send some letters in here, so, um... So, all I can say on that one. All right, next, I'll be pushing the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pat Couch, I want to thank you, because I heard you announce that you were taking letters for this position. And if Mr. Stewart is so upset that nobody applied, you get his friends out there to get letters in, so that we can get more people and make diversified committees. Get your friends, get your people, get your friends, everybody, doesn't care what color they are, get them in here, get them to sign up, get them to volunteer, that's what this was all about. If people don't want to volunteer, you can't drag them in here, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, my name is Francine Anderson, and I live at sixteen oh six, two hundred and sixteen street.
Mr. Mayor, I have quite a few questions in that, uh, statement committee that I filled out for your agenda today. I was arguing, gee, one, you're appointed to Human Relations Committee. Uh, I was here, and you was here last week, and Miss Hatt politely called me a bee in your audience. And if you're unaccording to someone, you can publicly demean someone else in the public, in this meeting, in your audience, then I would say, gee, what kind of Human Relations Committee are we going to be able to talk with? It is not one who cares about diversity, it's not one who cares about differences, it's not one who can honestly say that they are willing to open their heart and their minds to accept this for others who are different from them. So, I think we need to reconsider from appointing your Human Relations Committee. Uh, number two, I'd like to go to six, sir. Uh, I'd like to know, what's this for year, is this particular money set for going to appoint? Uh, what is the exact date for the appointment for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars under fee? Also, sir, under your disbursement, under your account's pay. I am interested in finding out, under the general fund administration and other contracts, I'm interested in finding out who is Marie L. Rogers, and what kind of services did she provide us for our three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents? I see attendance to deposition, but what was your deposition about? I am interested in finding out, sir. And also, sir, since you have the attorney here today, I don't see, he's getting a report, but I'm sure that his name appears somewhere in here. Um, I am interested in still finding out how much money did the law firm make in their consultation with the village clerk in her demands of being judge and jury over Mr. Hammond's petition? Uh, if you can answer those questions, I would appreciate it. And if I still have time in my three minutes, you can also tell me how many, uh, home break-ins were done within the last thirty days, sixty days, and nine, if you know, how many votes have been resolved? And if you know, please let me know, because my phone has not been resolved.
Right. Let's go to the council, that's the fastest one, uh, that was for a court record, and that was for a hearing that we had here at the Village Hall on, on January... What's that? Twenty-seven, that's twenty-seven, yes, right, no, it's bigger, oh, okay. That was December, I can't remember which back, I can't remember which one there, but, plus for a hearing, that was out there, and it's for court record. Uh, home break-ins, I don't know if the chief has that information, but I'm sure he provided it, he doesn't have it tonight, uh, which I didn't have information. But I don't have the information from him, so I can't answer that question. And, uh, as for the person that we're appointing tonight, I'll go again. Uh, Ms. Anderson, I never received a letter from you, I never received a letter from Mr. Stewart, I never received a letter from anyone except from this place to be on this committee. Uh, so, again, I would encourage you, if you know anyone who wants to get involved in this committee, if you know anyone who wants to get involved in, uh, committees, commissions, uh, it was like, I'd say it was taken very seriously, and when, uh, positions are open, you know, if you're interested in serving, and so we're looking for it, and it's a volunteer position, so, people, I'm sorry, uh, we're looking for people that are, who volunteer, hate the price of bill, so, we received one letter, and that's the person that we're appointing tonight, so, um, the, um, and I think that's all, I'll go there, so... Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right, seeing on, I'm going to have another three, before we do there, first off, I'd like to give the question to you. Questions report for November November, property taxes, twenty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Other taxes, one hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Licenses and permits, four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Fees and services, two hundred forty-eight thousand nineteen dollars and fifteen cents. Grants, two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Next, there's, four hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Miscellaneous, three hundred one thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. That gives us total revenue, one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand four dollars and eighty-four cents. Let's switch the mic here real quick, thank you. And after November November, month of December. Other property taxes, property taxes, sixty-eight thousand seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Other taxes, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Licenses and permits, nine thousand four hundred thirty dollars and ninety cents. Fees and services, one hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. Grants, one thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. Transfers, one hundred twenty thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. And miscellaneous, uh, one hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Total revenue was seven hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Excuse me. All right, wanna talk about, uh, Inbridge, it's going to be having open houses here at the Village Hall on Thursday, February nineteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, here, uh, in the boardroom. And, um, they're gonna be talking about their next project coming through, uh, line seventy-eight, project, it's a seventy-nine mile, uh, project with thirty-six inch diameter crude oil pipe. Uh, it's coming from the terminal there in Pontiac, Illinois, it's going out to the Griffith, Indiana, so, uh... Uh, the project is, um, I think it's already started, but they're appointing the committees to have open houses, and I'd recommend we go, go, mark your calendars for Thursday, February nineteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. Yeah, but that's, uh, to go quick.
Yes, can we get a copy of the, uh, questions report?
Yes, they provide it.
Present?
Come on, I provide, you did it. Yeah, they, they put it in your box.
Okay, just completely different than that. Thank you.
All right, go straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to address the issue of Danny Hammond, and this is coming from me personally, and I am speaking the truth to you. You can choose to listen to the height by Facebook, or you can choose to listen to the village clerk, and the village attorney, and your mayor. I was instructed to not certify Danny Hammond available, due to the fact that his petitions were not informed. I was told that this is what I had to do as the village clerk. That does not mean that I agree with the action that I had to take, that I was directed to do. However, as the village clerk, I work in the direction of the attorney, I work in the direction of the mayor, I work in the direction of the village trustees, and I work in the direction of the residents. That's what I was put in this place to do, and yes, I have my slippers on too. Because for me to have to have been put on Facebook as an over, with a green face and a green body, and demeaned, because I followed the directions that I was told to do in my position, that shows such poor character from other people. But me personally, I did my job, and it's not something I wanted to do. And I have done a lot of things in this position that I didn't necessarily want to do, or would have done if I hadn't had to take the direction that I was chosen and given to do. So, that being said, we do have six candidates that were certified for the election. Unfortunately, there's a, there is a meat brief flyer going around that shows Danny Hammond as your second candidate. As your village clerk, I tell you that there were six candidates certified for the election. If you have any questions, please contact Eric Olson, our village attorney, or Mr. Mike Brett, who was sitting on the dais tonight. And as a matter of fact, not only did I send Danny Hammond a letter in the mail, I invited him to my office personally to discuss the situation, I asked him if he had any questions whatsoever. I put the village attorney on the phone at the time, and I didn't live dandyly to see if he was satisfied that all his questions were answered. So, had it been done literally, only if I had not gotten that direction from the village attorney. Another direction I'd like to receive from the village attorney is some clarity on the Open Meetings Act. As the Open Meetings Act officer, sometimes I'm given the impression that people think I do things on a personal level. And let me assure you, my job as village clerk is nothing for personal, it's a professional job. As the Open Meetings Act officer, I had questioned the open meetings that were taking place when the town hall meetings first started. And it looked as if I was trying to do something personal against the person running that, that meeting. Nothing could be further from the truth. I totally agree with every person being able to run for office, because ultimately, it's the people, it's the residents that choose our elected officials. I personally agree with town hall meetings, because it does give everybody a little bit more leeway to come and speak freely than they might have had the opportunity of working. So, nothing could be further than the truth that I was trying to stop with town hall meetings. But however, I have a situation that has also come to my attention, and this is not the first time this comes to my attention. So, I would like direction from the village attorney to please make a memo for all committee chair people, which includes trustees and non-trustees of shared committees. What do we need to do in order to hold a committee? I know that most committees have standard times that they meet. However, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple of committees that had meetings that were outside their regular meeting times. When trustee Myers told me he was changing his meeting, he asked me to prepare an agenda for him, which I did, and it was within the forty-eight hours that is required by the Open Meetings Act. When trustee Burgess notified me on Monday night at seven forty-nine that he wanted another meeting at seven o'clock on Wednesday, I told him that that would not be within the forty-eight hour requirement. However, that meeting was still held on Wednesday at seven o'clock. I know that all of the committees are a little lax when it comes to posting their agendas, and all of the committees are a little lax when it comes to posting when they're gonna meet. It is to the residents' benefit that they know when these committees are meeting, because somebody might be interested in joining one of these committees one day, and they'd like to know when they're meeting, and they'd like to find out a little bit more about it. So, I'm not fighting any violation with the Attorney General that there's been an Open Meetings Act violation, but I am asking the village attorney to please submit a letter or a memo to the entire board and all the committee people, chairs, chairlifts committees, and let them know what exactly must they do. Because my understanding is, you must post a meeting notice for the forty-eight hours of the meeting, and my understanding is you should post an agenda. And I'm not gonna say that everybody's doing the right thing, but I would like to say from today forward, can we all just get along and all just do the right thing, so that nobody can come to me and tell me what A did because B did it different? I think there's one way to do things, and I think what we should do is follow the direction of our village attorney, which is what I try to do. And, in saying that, um, there was one more thing I wanted to say. It's election time, I'm not even running for election, and yet still I'm constantly plastering Facebook in the most demeaning way I possibly can be plastered. And, you know what, if that's what makes people feel good, do it. But you know, I'm not gonna fight negativity, I can only encourage everybody who's running for election to think about positive actions that you wanna take in this village, because we're all involved down to it. We don't need the negativity, we got nothing negative physical out of those, we got no problems. But to, to, to continue to act mean and get on Facebook and act, um, out of character and totally demeaning elected officials who are working for you personally, am I offended? Yeah. But if anybody wants to know the truth about what's going on, I suggest you don't go into the hype on Facebook. I suggest you come to the Village Hall and arrange for a meeting with me and the mayor, or call the village attorney at seven oh eight four two four five seven eight, because that's what we're here for, yeah. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, if I speak on, just my name is Brett, thank you. First of all, um, this, uh, but you did come in there, um, you had, I made you on Wednesday, and you did tell me that I informed you at seven forty-nine, and I said, you're absolutely correct. We didn't start our meeting, and you were there, we didn't start our meeting until seven fifty, simply because, we just sat there, we talked, and that's what we told you. But when you just stated that you're not going to say this, and say, you just said it. So, please don't say that, you know, because I asked you about an agenda, you said, your job is not to put an agenda together for us, which is not... My job is to give you the agenda that we're gonna have, which is what I did. But to say that you weren't going to say, think about it, that day, which you told us that Wednesday, even though you started that, you know, you're here at seven o'clock, you're not supposed to be here until seven forty-nine, or you're not supposed to meet until seven forty-nine. However, um, I have nothing to do with that, those were your exact words, word for word. Here it is now, Tuesday, almost a week later, and you just brought it up, saying that you weren't going to, but that's okay. I had our meetings were recorded, and we didn't start, and we didn't open until seven fifty, and we closed it at eight o'clock. And we discussed what we were supposed to discuss, and we left out there at about eight, eight oh one, and you know that, because we said, I said that. So, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to, bring it out, since you wanted to say that, um, you know, I was wrong or whatever. It's not a matter that I was wrong, I wasn't wrong, we didn't start until such time, and you know that. But, you know, we're not gonna go back and forth, I just wanted to make mention that you said that Wednesday, you know, even though you started that, even though you're here at this time, you're not supposed to be here, and you're meeting, you're not supposed to start at seven fifty, but... Your words again, I'm not gonna say, think about it, but here we are, thank you.
Trustee Burgess, what I said was, I'm not gonna, uh, file a complaint with the Attorney General for an exact violation, and I also...
That's what you just made, but you don't have to, you don't have to say it, it's in the minutes, it's in the minutes. It's in the minutes, you don't have to, you don't have to file a complaint, you just made it part of record, because you just put it in the minutes.
And I also made a current record for every trustee and committee chair here to follow the Open Meetings Act. When I said when I walked into the office, when you were having your meeting, I repeated it three times, if you continue to have meetings tonight, you're gonna violate your Open Meetings Act. You did not post your agenda until Tuesday, you were having a meeting on Wednesday, this is a special meeting that was not a regular meeting that... I'm not trying to call out you, trustee Myers, or any other committee.
But you did.
What I'm saying is, from now on, we all need to do the same thing, we all need to follow the same rules, that's what I'm saying. And I asked, I told you when I walked in there, that I would not, I'm saying to the Attorney General, I'm making a blanket statement to everybody, and I also told you three times, if you continue the meeting, you will be in violation, and Julie K. said, we're not having a meeting, we're having a friendly gathering.
Absolutely, but you, but you did say, and you did make mention, yes, you did, so, that's okay, we didn't start until that time, and it was recorded.
Doesn't matter, it wasn't posted.
But you said you weren't going to mention, and you just mentioned two trustees that you felt.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, uh, I have a comment. Was there any reason that we would... There was a watchdog down there a lot of nights, to make sure that I could start by being aware, and the gentleman, like, out here, out there, that, uh... It was, it was, you know, as soon as they respect us, I mean, we know what, uh, it's all about, for me too. Yeah, but, you know, I, I don't see having any watchdogs, and, and, or, we got cameras throughout this entire place with that. But, we, uh, we know where we gotta go, and, uh, people won't follow us, like, and if we follow, they'll probably follow, like, but... To have a watchdog down there and monitoring, when we come in the building, is, uh, I don't regret this, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say, my village clerk, in regard to the, uh, flyer that circulated, that circulated by the neighborhood watch, first of all, I received numerous phone calls where I was badgering about the flyer, and about the contents of the flyer. The committee for the neighborhood watch agreed to host a forum after being contacted by several residents. All of these people that's on this flyer, whether they was certified by the school board or by a youth clerk, they contacted the neighborhood watch committee, said they were running. Specifically, Mr. Danny Hammond, I talked to him also myself, from what I understand, he is appealing that, uh, non-certification, and if he shows up, or any of these candidates show up, fine, if none of them show up, that's fine, but the forum is gonna go on. But I don't think that anyone have a right to dictate to me as the chair of the neighborhood watch what to put on any literature that I put out, how I put it out. I know that Mr. Hammond was not certified, but when I talked to him, he told me he was up to it. And anyone that contacted my committee, after talking with my committee, if we wanna give them opportunity to be heard, if they do make the ballot, they have that right. But I don't think it's right for anyone to call and undermine me or reprimand me for anything that I'm doing for the residents to be able to meet and greet their soon coming and encompassing elected officials.
I'm just trying to stop the confusion, for people to know that there are six trustee candidates that have been certified by both county and village clerk. Six candidates, I'm only trying to stop the confusion, I did not have a way of anybody. I'm just saying, there are six candidates that have been certified. If and when a challenge is done, and Danny Hammond succeeds, I'll be the first one to walk up to him and shake his hand and say congratulations, because that is the political, the right thing to do, and I would do that in an instant, but what I'm saying is, it's confusing if you think that there's seven candidates, what if that... There are six candidates that have been certified at the county clerk's office.
By you at this time.
There you go, all right. All right, mic went off again, so we'll, we'll try this one here. All right, if you get order here. All right, any questions? Hey, again, I think the attorneys could break this one down, we just came back from I M O, there was like three sessions coming up with the meeting act. Uh, trustee should have attended votes, and should be very well, um, aware of what we need to do and what should be done, so, um, I bet one of the attorneys, sorry. All right, the village attorneys, officers, your, your turn on the back.
Thank you, Mayor, over.
The village engineer, Mr. Ray.
And Mr. Mayor, first of all, an update on the water treatment plan improvement project. Just had bacteria and B O C sampling done on the airstripers in that past, so we are filing a partial operating permit to the I E P A. And once we get permission from them, then the contractor can move, uh, full speed ahead on the remaining work there, uh, in the well house, the iron filter, and the electrical. And then, for anyone interested, we are going to have an update on the progress of water system improvements in general on Tuesday, March third, at six o'clock, so I'll be giving the presentation then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Question number four, reports from trustees and board committees, uh, partial recreation committee, Mr. Houseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and a couple of things, uh, with reminder, we're having craft show, March fourteenth, at Community Center. We're starting to get vendors who are signing up, if you're interested in having a table, uh, space is ten dollars, if you need a table, we are ready to have a table, three dollars. So, if you're an interested C B, there are flyers out in the hallway, not a bad table, but out in the hallway. If you need any questions, feel free to talk to me afterwards or call me. We also are having baseball sites, the next two or three weeks or weekends are going on, over at Community Center, and Sullivan is taking those applications and trying to get baseball, like, started up this summer, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee, you have a case committee, next committee meeting will be held at, uh, here at the Village Hall on Wednesday, February the eighteenth, at, um... Seven o'clock, thank you very much. Uh, committee meetings are held on the third Wednesday of every month here, and, uh, prior to that, a bunch of other committees. Uh, we're looking for volunteers, so if you're looking to volunteer, if you're looking to involve, you have a case committee, we need volunteers. But being very honest with you, this is a very active committee, a hard-working committee, that get their hands very dirty, out there, pulling trees, planting flowers, um, so... So, if you're looking to, uh, get involved in the qualification committee, I'll be forwarding letters you can send to the Village Hall, crap off my desk, uh, to my attention, and we'll make sure they get to the committee. Move to your order, trustee, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sir, the, the order is from you, we met last Thursday, and we reviewed the, uh, the, uh... The resolution that the, for the president to, for the sign, and the, for the consent of the board members, the president, the resolution for approval tonight, as we... So, tonight we have, uh, the, uh, the sign, sacrificially, the sign, uh, to pull down. Uh, second, we met, uh, for the, uh, debt recovery committee, on the twenty-ninth of January.
Uh, second, we met, uh, for the, uh, debt recovery committee, on the twenty-ninth of January. Uh, we met, the gentleman, the collection agent, sir, Mr. Donald, new member. Uh, he met with us, he ran through the whole entire program, he told what we had to do. Uh, the state required a, uh, a test run, which, uh, in the making, in the making of our, uh, current day. Uh, that we, that would include, I think it was one of the residents asked, what, uh, tickets sent up. It includes, it included all the co-tickets, uh, that have been rolled, and all the P tickets that have been rolled. And they would be processed, and then it goes to the state, and they come back up, or, along with it, and we send it back to the state to, to, uh. Well, I've also, uh, heard today, we did get an I D number, and, uh, that's the biggest thing we were waiting on. Uh, unfortunately, I heard in here, also, that there is about four hundred thousand dollars bill uncollected, and on the old system, that we're going to try and move back over to, uh, for the one where we can send those, or, to, uh, our, uh, state, see if we can get anything on that at all. Uh, we're waiting on the, and I think it was today that they were going to find a manager before us, and we will leave them alone, on that, if you're, if you're-
I spoke with the representative of the, uh, I C A P clerk's office, and he suggested we listen to the test file. Once the test file is, uh, given to I O C, they will upload it into I O C system. And then, if it goes, I'll find them, they will be, given the account number, moving forward, they can turn in all the information that I, so, that is, look.
So we're off and running, but, uh, our next meeting is planned to be the tenth of October, twenty-sixth. Give it one. We had a good meeting last night, uh, clear or not, we were able to surprise, uh, the watching, and we had a little birthday party for her. I won't tell you how she is, but she, I think, I think we should, but, uh, but, uh, everything looked well, we had some new watch happen there, uh, we discussed a couple things, uh. We, uh, informed that, uh, our police officers were tied up, that was, they was making, uh, we'll get them on our next meeting. Um, with that, uh, everything looked good, we discussed the major things. The Neighborhood Watch is, I feel that it's a, a good committee, a positive community, and we're doing good. People is calling in, uh, getting the better description to the police department, where the guys can go out there and get the bad guys, other than long. Um, and it's not, uh, we're having more lights turn on, uh, throughout town, we buy them up through the town, and you see a lot of lights on. And the lights also, the bad guys stay away from the houses. And we are pushing for our members to check on your, uh, neighbors and senior citizens. If they, if we haven't seen them for a while, we're not gonna go and see how they're doing. And if they're, they're doing that. Um, there's one thing that, uh, I've asked to, the net, and that will be laid up in the back. And there is an ordinance handbook for, uh, parent responsibility, and we've asked them all back. I'll get a copy of it, and I'll lay it on the back, and you already can pick it up at the front desk. But there is an ordinance handbook, and it's also a state statute, that, uh, parents of, uh, children under a certain age is held, who are fully responsible for their actions. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee mayor, go to the visualization committee, trustee Burt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you know, uh, we had the C E T A come out on the fifth of February here. They helped quite a few people, um, with the energy efficiency, the energy assistance program. Um, I'd like to thank the Mount Jezza came out, and they were working pretty good, and we had to go back and forth, and we did, you know, help them. The present, I mean, the, uh, people that actually came out and did the, uh, uh, helping of the residents get the energy, uh, assistance that they needed. It was, I know it was a time-consuming process because you had to have so much documentation, but they were still able to help quite a few people. And I'd like to thank the comeback committee that came out and, and to help them. Um, also, our next meeting for the intergovernmental relations will be the first Thursday, March fifth, here at Village Hall, at seven o'clock. And that concludes our report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee, neighborhood watch committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, trustee Myers. And I did wanna just give kudos to my committee, they really did surprise me last night. I really wanna thank Rachel and Arlene, and all of the committee members that was there last night. We had cake, and chicken, and french fries, and pop, and juice, and just all kinds of cupcakes and decorations. They really, really surprised me, people really, really surprised me. Well, getting up the log, we could chew off, did a good job last night, and thank you again. I wanna just, um, reiterate that the Neighborhood Watch at this time is providing a community service to the community by hosting a forum for the next election that's coming up for the candidates. And I would encourage all of you to let your neighbors and your friends know about it, to come out to the forum. The Neighborhood Watch will be out in full, we do expect a full house. As you know, the seats here are limited, so we're gonna, uh, have the, uh, school board members at one, and then they're gonna come down, and then the trustees are gonna go up at three. There are flyers in the back, and we have been putting flyers on the businesses. We are blitzing and just putting, uh, flyers all over the neighborhood, so we expect a great turnout on that night. If you have some questions for the school board members or for trustees, write those questions down and give them to me. We're gonna have them that night, and they'll be pulling, and they'll be asking questions at that forum. So if you have any other questions or suggestions, you can feel free to talk to me after the meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Move to government relations, community outreach partnership, uh, committees, trustee Burt.
We discussed during government day, which there should still be flyers on the back table for the casino trip for, um, excuse me, for March, March second, that's gonna be happening, um, like I said, there should be flyers on the back table for that. We also chose the, the winners for the village sticker contest. Um, those winners have been notified, and they, they, we just told them that they were finalists. Um, on next, the twenty-fourth, the board meeting of the twenty-fourth, we'll be announcing the winners, and having them off hopefully, all at the same time, with their, um, parents, and we will elect the winner then. Um, last year was a really good turnout, we had school board members, we had teachers, we had residents, we had the students, we had their families, so we're hoping for the same thing. So again, that's the board meeting of the twenty-fourth, we will be announcing the winners, and, um, hopefully being able to display this year's finalists in the hallway like we did last year. So that concludes our part of the relations and community outreach partnership. We met this evening, um, as a committee, which, um, she was there with us, so we could have some good conversation. There was some, um, good suggestions that I brought, that I brought out. We did discuss national like out, which I know is far away, it's the first Tuesday of August, it's August fourth. Um, but we figured, the sooner we start planning, the more activities and presentations we might be able to have. So we are working on that, and we did discuss some items in the police department may need some assistance with, in ways that we can assist them, uh, moral support, financial support. So we will be working on a couple different things in the upcoming months. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Number five, enforcement departments, committees, commissions, fire department, and the commission chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past few weeks, fire department responded to twenty-eight calls. Seven vehicle accidents, six firearms, six assists to, uh, floods, five C O R's, one waterfall alarm, one possible fire, one transformer fired, and one assist to another time. On that, uh, medical assist, I'm sure everybody who's ever been out there, twenty-two inches of snow, and had people for standby at the station, and, uh, was what I, I already called it, followed, and then all the people, so.
Thank you. Move to, uh, police department, chief, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to report, uh, the period one twenty-seven to two ten. Police department responded to a total of six hundred and eighty-six calls for service, uh, ninety-seven of which were traffic related, fifty-five, uh, suspicious, uh, activity, seventy-five other calls for service, twenty-six parking calls, fourteen juvenile problems, twenty-five domestic calls, one hundred and thirty building checks, anti-burbles alarms, uh, forty ambulance assists, and, uh, forty-nine other alarm calls. And that concludes our report for this week.
Thank you, chief. Move to, uh, worst department, director-
Excuse me, chief, what did you say, a hundred and thirty-something?
Uh, hundred and thirty building checks, or?
Hundred and thirty building checks, what is that?
Uh, front check, there's, that's, uh, uh, uh.
All right, from the worst department, Derek, come on.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, streetlight issues, uh, we've had a few around the community here. We do have our new streetlight heads at the shop right now. Uh, we do have two outstanding streetlights, uh, I understand my combat has not been out, it's been two months. Uh, but they are the two that were, were, were a couple times during the meeting. One on, uh, two nineteen in Jeffrey, and then was on Orient. Uh, we currently have started putting out some of the new streetlights, we have about seven up so far. Uh, we have one on, um, Nichols, we have two over on Jeffrey, we have a couple over on two hundred twenty-first in Shirley Baxter area, and, uh, we will continue any replacement lines, any problem lines, we can put the new ones in place. So, I mean, that's out currently, but we replace with a new one. Um, hydrants, fire hydrants, so we have two we're preparing for, um, the one is at two seventeen place in Bailey, and the other one is at twenty thirty-six, two eighteen place. Uh, these are hydrants that are gonna be adjusted because the current hydrant in the location that's at, uh, will be abandoned, and we'll adjust them about ten feet away. So they won't be exactly in the same spot, but they'll be in the same pathway. Um, ashtray removals, uh, we've got a lot of ashtrays in town, we did start to cutting them down prior to the snowfall, um, but we're weather permitting right now, we're, uh, savage. Uh, during the storm events, we had all eighty pieces of equipment, including our backhoes. Uh, we did get, with the storm events, all three of them, right around thirty inches of snow. Most of our problems on the streets were residents pushing the snow back into the roadway or holding it back into the street. And we cannot have that, it causes accidents, it causes ice in the middle of the street, and we're hoping, hopefully, we'll get some help, at least in, uh, the co-operation, the lawyers to take this next time. Uh, we had it in the past, but it's becoming a bigger and bigger issue each year. Um, we definitely, our, our goal isn't to bury any driveways in, but, um, when we move the snow, no matter how much it is, it's gonna end up in the driveways. Even if we have to go by several times, just like anybody else, just like every, every employee of public works, at the end of the snowstorm, we all have to go home to and direct drivers out, and that's at the end of it all. So each resident, yes, each time we go by, when the streets have to be cleared, you will have to clean your driveway off if you access that. It's not, um, any specific thing, it's just what it is. If there's any other suggestions, and somebody can show us in the community to do something differently, and, uh, to keep up with the times we currently use to clear the streets, please bring that forth. Um, also, building maintenance, uh, due to the weather conditions and some of the work that I displayed, we are doing some work with some of the buildings, and we, uh, had some work in the police department with some lighting issues. Uh, community center right now is in the process of being patched up, uh, for some paint, also the gym area, and some of the halls in that area, in the, in the same building. Um, and also, puddle complaints, uh, with the weather conditions now, the thaw, those will start to open up. Right now, a lot of the puddles have ice and water in them, so as we, as we see them, we will repair them, but until, uh, the, the snow has melted enough, we, we really can't do a lot of, of for them. Um, salt costs. Currently, right now, we have ordered three hundred, uh, ton of our, five hundred ton, uh, order this year. Um, salt prices are ridiculous, um, they're a hundred thirty-four dollars a ton right now, which is ridiculous. And, uh, after the public works meeting that was just at, they're, uh, assuming that the prices are gonna go up in the next season here, which is the upcoming season, so they're figuring it's gonna be about another ten dollars for that. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Um, Kevin, I just wanted to say, um, a couple of things, uh, first of all, you guys did a, you know, a yoman's job. I know it was, a lot of people were complaining because my phone was ringing off the hook about, um, getting out there, but they have to understand that this particular snow that we had was a wet snow. I call it a whittlemaker because it was a lot of water, it wasn't fluffy. And the trucks that we have, uh, we don't have the ones that would handle this type of snow, we don't have a certain amount. That's something that needed to be explained to, to them, we have trucks, but this heavy snow, we had to put the big ones out there, the big ones to, to actually start the, uh, uh, snow removal, then you brought the smaller ones that had to clean up, and we only have so many big ones, but when you did come out, especially where I'm at, you came out and they, and they did it, and you're right, there were people, I know there was one person that was standing in front of the driveway, wouldn't let you drive past, because she just got through, it was a lady, she just got through, uh, shoving her snow, so she didn't want to go back on her driveway, but there's no other place to put it, you have a driveway, that's what happens, you know? But, um, that's, 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 that's just part of the, uh, the job that you have to do when you have a driveway, you have to go out there back and forth when they come out. But I just wanted to say that you guys, even though it was a lot of criticism, they didn't understand the snow was heavier than normal, and it was, you know, and that you couldn't put, that, we don't have that many large trucks to take care of the village like that, so you did it strategically, and, uh, it took a little time, but when you guys did, you did a great job. That's all I said.
All right, trustee.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Kevin, uh, I'm gonna piggyback with, uh, Mr. Burgess. Uh, on February one, what I did is soon, and my residents out my front door at seven thirty-three A M, Department of Public Works was going down my street. Throughout that day, I was driving around in my own personal vehicle, and I've been hearing a lot of complaints that the Department of Public Works is not on my block, where are they at? And I would talk to residents and say, they are out there, they're out there in full force. I went to where Mr. Burgess lives, and I was in that area, and Mr. Burgess is saying the same thing, uh, I was stopped, and I was talking to residents, and they were saying, where are the plows? And it was around eleven thirty or something like that, I think. I was in front of Mr. Burgess, I was talking with him, and he said the same thing, that residents were coming to him and saying, where is the Department of Public Works at? And like I said, uh, they are out there, uh, it was a heavy, wet snow, but, uh, I mean, they can't be everywhere at every minute, but they, if they were out, they were doing their job, and they were doing a darn good job at it. Thank you.
Can I just say something, I was gonna say something at the very end, and I think all the departments did a fantastic job during the snowfall. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the department that's are here, and the chief, and, uh, our gratefulness to your, um, your employees and your departments. Uh, I don't know if everyone realizes everything that happened. Uh, of course, public works was out early that morning, first of all, getting all thoroughways, uh, cleared, and starting to hit the side streets. Came the snow a little, uh, South River, right about the bus area around, even called the U S. Uh, on Monday, I was at one of the suburbs, uh, and I was coming home, and, uh, the model operations shut down coming south, so I had to shoot, uh, shoot through Summit, and go through Orland, go by, I tell you what, some of the worst roads, uh, I've ever seen, on the side roads, and those are some pretty good towns that I can drive through. And I was so glad to be home because South River streets were passable. Uh, our public works department, they worked, um, probably about eleven, twelve hours, starting on early Sunday morning. Uh, they took a few hours break, and then they were back out there again, uh, hitting up those streets, and then the snowfall all the way hit. But as once you cleared the street, it seemed like the snow stopped, and all of a sudden it started snowing again, and it was snow covered. So, you did a great job. Our fire department, uh, had our fire department out there with fire trucks, uh, on the streets, uh, not sitting inside the fire department, but they were on the streets. Uh, they also opened up the fire department for roaming center, uh, during that time. So our fire fighters were there helping our residents. Uh, police department, uh, they were out there on the streets like they always are, um, but they were out there braving the, the cold, the snow, and making sure residents were safe, that was out there, um, helping also. So I think all four departments, and I hope I didn't misname one, but, uh, you did a fantastic job. Think about, we had over twenty inches of snow, less than twenty-four hour period of time. Uh, and they jumped on it, they were prepared, uh, and it showed that they had great communication between, uh, all the department and the department. So, uh, you did a great job, and I'd say thank you, just pass it off to your, uh, your, your, your partners.
Move to administrative services, uh, director Sherry, is it seat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just following, uh, Village Hall will be closed Monday, on the sixteenth, uh, to observe the President's Day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Who's finance director, Mr. Ramon Ho?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the board. Uh, there are a couple items, uh, and, uh, the finance department has reported, uh, two contracts, quarterly reports, one for twenty-five thousand, and the other one is for fifty thousand to Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The next financial collective support will be available by the next quarter meeting. Um, third one is, the audit for, uh, T I F F reports will be done soon, in the four, five days. I will get the draft, I will- I will get the draft, and we will finalize over this weekend.
The, your report on the audit, can you please fire?
Uh, yeah, I haven't seen all the audits from the public, uh, quite yet.
This month?
Yes.
So, is it this month, Police Fire, uh, mention, or, or the gate?
Correct. So, um, I'm, I'm waiting for one more report from, um, um, the actuary report from the public's pension fund. Once I get the actuary report, I will release all the ones that I was talking about.
And so, the board, uh, we've put out a lot of, uh, we've had a lot of audits in the last two years, five years worth of audits. To get us up to date, as of right now, the village is completely up to date. We just received the Police Fire Attention audits, which was serious for five years. Uh, so now they are up to date. Uh, you know, like you said, we have one more report that we have to complete. And, um, Mr. Monahan has done a great job. The auditors pretty much lived here. Uh, they came in here at night, you see them working, you see them working during the day. Um, so, you think about, usually you do one audit per year. In the last two years, we've done five. We've got, all of that to 2009, so, 2009, 2010, 2010, 2011, 2011, 12, 2012, 13, and 13 and 14. Uh, so, uh, great work, um, Mr. Rose, um, that would be you, your, your part of the one. But, uh, the auditors, uh, for putting in the extra time and all, we did, so. And then we have, we have to give a thank you to the Police Fire Commission Board because, you know, we, we were pretty rough on them. Uh, they, they were refusing to get them done, uh, and we had to put our, our foot down. So, it's a board, and it's our decision, and, uh, they stuck up to the plate, and they have their audits going to do it, so. Uh, it's good news for South Village, uh, it's good news for the residents, you know, that our audits, uh, are now putting off the gate in the village.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Monahan, you mentioned, I didn't get that. You said at the beginning it was 50,000 for, we, we asked, did you have something to pay, or what would you, what was the statement for?
Uh, the 50. The 50,000 is for, uh, both for fire patterns and, uh, the E box replacement. Another 25,000 is for purely for replacement of, repair or replacement of, uh, fire patterns. That is the first report that I have to do with the Department of Commerce and Economic.
Of course, that is a reimbursement.
Yes. We, we have already gotten about 25% of, 25,000, plus another 25% of 50,000.
Okay. I, I wanna make sure, does it sound like we were paying, so this is what, what did it reimburse for?
We have 60,000 already in reimbursement already. But the thing is, I have to provide the expense support, whether we have spread the money or not. We are supposed to turn it to the board, that I have to.
Thank you.
All right, move to South Village, Homeland Security, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, uh, the last two weeks, as of the 16th incidents, uh, over a terrible fire, two fatal accidents, five firemen, four school patrols, two structural fires, one wire is down, and one, one wire is up. And just a couple others, um, stated all the way, people are, uh, had ordered, uh, airport, uh, prepared for this month. Uh, drop the cover and hold on. Uh, if you want any other information, go to www.rede.lonelone.com. And the North, uh, National Weather Service, Action Month, uh, is turned around on route. We come across a flood on the roadway, turn around, it is unsafe to cross the roadway, so, uh, we don't have a lot of that in this area, but it is possible. I have to move my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move to Human Relations Commissioner, Justin Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a point.
All right, we have an A-3 appointment for Human Relations Commissioner, Jacqueline, I'm not gonna mess your name up, but Clay is, I'm just gonna be your last name. Would I ask your motion to approve, Jacqueline, for the Human Relations Commissioner? Okay, motion is there, second? Go to Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Present.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right. Does, uh, Jacqueline, can you come up? Can you reach your sign in?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To the House of Human Relations Commissioner in the Village of South Village, in the counties, also in the, uh, for a second. So, I always learn that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Human Relations Commissioner to the best of my ability. This is a very challenging.
And we always say, can I hear your sign in? Tomorrow you can sign it. So, it's starting tonight, so welcome. All right, move to Housing Commission, Commissioner Holcomb. Move to Senior Committee, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time to appear in your second installment building. Uh, the three senior organizations have, uh, are looking, inviting seniors 50-plus to invite one or more of the organizations. The Monday meeting, uh, Sunshiners met last night, they planned the year's event. These are the time, the first meeting of the year will be tomorrow, February 11th at 4:00 p.m. They're having sandwiches, uh, a sandwich meal and a meeting followed. South Village Bluegrass continues from 6:00 to 10:00. Silver Sneaker classes continue every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. The next open senior activity is Friday, February 13th from 12:00 to 4:00. Paper book exchange continues very successfully. Thank you to our continued book donors and participants. Little Township, the Love Boat, uh, luncheon featuring Frank Rossi is on Tuesday. February 24th, with limited tickets, are on sale. Deadline to purchase a ticket is February 17th, unless they're sold out. Other programs, they are basic line dancing, um, a Friday, Wednesday and Friday cheer exercise, free legal, uh, legal assistance, blood pressure screening, and the ARP riding courses, health insurance assistance. And also, they are taking appointments for tax preparation in the Low-Cost Senior Wheels. The Jones Memorial Center, Golden Age, who have the meeting on Wednesday, February 18th, annual booth at $5, and, uh, $5 for lunch. Social Hour, 10:00, meeting at 10:30 and lunch at 11:30. Uh, the IRS imposter scam continues to impact citizens across the country in Illinois. Anyone can be targeted with this scam included, including the Federal Trade, uh, Commission attorney. The IRS and the FTC are trying to raise public awareness and how this scam works to help taxpayers recognize this is a scam. The IRS, uh, impersonation scam typically consists of individuals contacted by consumers by telephone claiming they are IRS agent, that the consumer owes IRS money. The callers suggest consumers that they should pay by wiring or loading money into a free debt card. The callers are threatening arrest and legal action, and their call appears to originate from Washington DC phone numbers. Scammers may know a consumer's full and partial social security number, letting credibility to the scam. A nearly 24-o increase in complaints related to IRS impersonation indicates scammers are using their technique against consumers across the country. Consumers have tools to fight back against these pervasive scams when it comes to tax identities. Consumers' best defense is to file their taxes as early as possible to get ahead of the scammers and attempt to use their social security to get a fraudulent refund. If a consumer is a victim, identity theft, they should contact FTS or online by telephone number. That's, um, 1-877-FTCHelp, and, oh, and also contact IRS at 1-800-908-4490. The next senior committee will be on Thursday, February 12, 5:00 p.m. Thank you, this ends my report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, a question. Um, Rose, I just, could you explain to me what the Silver Sneakers and what that's all about?
It's a fitness, health fitness, and some insurance company paid for it. If you're, I guess ARP is one insurance company, they give their members a card. It costs $2 per class, it's a fitness, it's by chair, or you can stand. It's an excellent program.
Is it held here?
And, uh, it's held in the senior center in economy. We do have a certified instructor.
Okay. Just one, and now, is it open to just members of the, of the, uh, or any, any senior?
It's open to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been advertised.
I'll just have a question, that's all.
Move to consent agenda, any trustees have anything? Would I have a move to consent agenda? Your motion to approve the consent agenda, as is. Motion second, go to Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries, I have the seven. Uh, motion to approve Councilwoman's persons for January 28, 2015, through February 10, 2014. I'm sorry, that's a, that's a typo, it should be February 10, 2015. So, would that change, make 2015, I'd like for a motion to approve. A move, and motion is there, second?
Second.
Any question or comments? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Good, the motion carries, I have the B, motion to approve Resolution of Approving a Class 8 Real Estate Tax Assessment Classification for the, uh, occupation of abandoned property in South Village, Will County, Illinois. Tenure requires a commission.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Trustee.
I said, so move.
You've got a motion, you've got a motion, second. Any question or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Um, I'd like to table this, uh, on the advice of our village attorney.
Table? What, what do you say?
Yeah, I have a problem, I just, I thought we had, that's why I thought it was now, because I thought we had tabled it before, and then we came back now, so, I was assumed that everything was taken care of, but I didn't know what it was. So, are we gonna discuss this this time to find out what's wrong? Because we didn't discuss it last night. I just, we're gonna table it, we need to have an executive session for this.
We're gonna, we're gonna table first, then we have to have a second.
I would draw my motion, then if we, if the trustee wants to.
We've got the motion, the second one, we have, um, we have a motion to the table.
So, move.
We have a motion, is there, second?
Second.
Motion, the second, any question or comments?
Yes, my question is, Mr. Mayor, we do do this, I think, we, I would like to, for the record, um, and go in the executive session and find out, because, like I said, this will be the second time that, the last time we weren't informed, we said we were gonna be informed once this was taken care of. I thought since it's on the agenda that it was taken care of, but obviously not, so, I would like to, for the record, for the record, for the record, again, we need to find out what's wrong.
Uh, you would feel is we can put a second session on, and thanks for you.
While we, just to go into that session, that's where our next meeting to find out exactly what the heck's going on.
Because I'm writing, maybe, can we, can we schedule the executive session for the next, uh, committee meeting, next week?
Yes. It's on you now.
So, it's, can we next week?
6:00 p.m. next week.
Okay.
The special meeting, next Tuesday evening at 6:00 p.m. All right, so we have a motion, and a second to table, is there any further discussion? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Abstain.
Williams. Yes.
All right, so motion carries. Okay, number C, a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, Village of South Village, Will, Villain, Orange, according to the renewal of the Class 6B Real Estate Tax Assessment Classification, Court 21699, South Tormand Avenue, and a motion to approve.
So.
The motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion is second, any question or comments? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess. Gordon. Myers. Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, I have the D, motion to approve the 6:00 p.m. special meeting held on January 27, 2015, is there a motion to approve?
So.
The motion is there, second?
Yes.
Motion is second, any question or comments? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Abstain.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries, I have the D, motion to approve the 6:30 p.m. special meeting minutes for January 27, 2015, is there a motion to approve?
Double.
Motion is there, second? Second, the motion is second, any question or comments? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Abstain.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries, I have the R, motion to approve and hold the executive session minutes for January 27, 2015, is there a motion to approve?
Double.
Second, we have motion, the second, any question or comments? Your number, Justice Callow.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Abstain.
Myers.
Yes.
Paskin.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries, I have the, uh, the, 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 the mayor board trustees, start with trustee Lynn. Trustee Myers. Trustee Gordon. Trustee Paskin. Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna remind everyone, the Neighborhood Watch Committee is open for block club captains. You are asking if you wanna be a block club captain, or if you know someone on your block that wanna be a block club captain, to get in contact with you, let me know. Also, I wanna remind you that we do have flyers in the back about the forum. I'd like to encourage you to take them and pass them out on your block, and encourage your neighbors to participate as a community service from the Neighborhood Watch Committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee, trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, uh, remind everyone, next Wednesday, as of week from tomorrow, we'll be having our town hall meeting from 7:00 to 8:30 here at the village. I will have some special guests coming from out of town to put on a special presentation at this meeting. Um, please invite your friends, your family, it's gonna be really, a really nice, um, venue. Um, again, you'll be here at 7 o'clock next Wednesday, February, uh, 18th, flyers in the back, and, um, that's all I can, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, also, I'd like to remind everyone on this Saturday, for your sweetheart, Meet the Mayor, here at the Village Hall. Be here from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and meet the mayor. Um, also, I'd like to personally wish trustee Washington his birthday tomorrow. Um, hope you have a great day. Now, we won't ask you how old you are, but, uh, 39, I thought it was. And, uh, my seniors in the audience, 39. All right, and, uh, I'd also like to wish everyone here on a little Saturday, it's Valentine's Day, I'd like to wish you had Valentine's Day, all your men, don't forget about your wives, buy them candy and flowers. Take them off for better. All right? But that said, I'd like to ask our little tour.
Second.
Should I say a hand, say aye? Any questions?